I'd like to call this August 28th, 2025 Board of Education Regular Meeting to Order. George, can you take the role?
Mrs. Bissell?
Here.
Thank you. Mrs. Bissell?
Here.
Mr. Griffin?
Here.
Mr. Mikko?
Here.
Ms. Thachek?
Here.
Mrs. Hausum?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. We can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda are strategic priorities. Our district has developed and is currently engaged in a three-year strategic plan which reflects the values, beliefs, and hopes of our students, staff, parents, and community. There are four strategic priorities to the plan: transforming teaching and learning, aligning staff and resources, cultivating culture and climate, and leveraging funding and facilities. Our strategic priorities give actionable focus to our district's purpose and mission and guide the work of our strategic plan. Next on the agenda is public comment. We do have two participants. First, I will call Wendy Richardson up to the podium. Wendy, if you could just approach the podium, give us your name and address, and you have approximately three minutes.
My name is Wendy Richardson. My address is 17875 Framingham Oval here in Strongsville. My question, I already submitted part of it to you, just to verify those amounts, but regarding public school funding and the scrapping of the Fair School Funding Plan in Ohio, and I know that's something that you're all concerned about as well. And I was just doing a little bit of digging, and the Constitution, which I'm sure you know also, says that lawmakers shall create a single system of common schools for the common good, and they are required to fund that system. My one question is, why Strongsville chose not to be a part of that historic lawsuit? And I don't expect answers tonight, but if you could share that with me, I can share that with my group, and then we don't all have to stand up here and ask you the same question. And the amounts that were in the paperwork I gave you were Strongsville's per-student funding. I was at another event where they said it's $1,153 per pupil, and the amount of one high school voucher is $84.08. So I was looking for verification of that, because if so, that's seven times the amount of state funding for one student here. That's all I have tonight, so thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. I'll give these numbers to George, and one of us will get back to you. Next, we have Maggie Coza.
Maggie Coza, I live at 912 Hazelwood Avenue, and I want to talk to you about some things that have been going on, and I wanted to make some of you aware. Before I start, I'm already talking to the middle school principal to try to help get something in place to help, but my biggest concern is the vape usage. I know you guys have a drug testing policy, but one of the things I have asked before, and I haven't seen in any of your communications, how many students in your extracurricular activities actually tested positive? I just want numbers. Obviously, we're not looking for names, I know the drill. I also am aware that you can't drug test every single student because of free and appropriate public education, and those laws apply, I get that. But we know that there's known usage off-campus, too, and more than likely, they're bringing these items into school. And I know, because I had a student in my house who has physically seen it, inside the classroom, inside the bathroom, came home, told me about it. We had some incidents over the summer where I've been letting my son have a little bit more freedom, go ride his bike up to town, go to the library, go to the rec center, play basketball at the new town center park, and it was going well for a while until he started coming home and said, "Mom, there's just a lot going on." And I got a phone call that I wish I didn't get a couple of weeks ago. I don't want to get into too many details, but everything is fine, it wasn't that bad, we're having life lessons being learned, but it's becoming an issue because he's being bullied for saying no, and he's being bullied for speaking up and saying, "This is wrong." And one of the things I wanted to bring up, and what I'm talking to Mr. Tullone about, is I get, you know, the PTA emails, and there was one that came in from the National PTA, and I'm gonna go for it, I'm gonna sit down with Mr. Tullone, and I think we're gonna try to ask the SRO and Officer Aaron to try to come and see what we can do, but there's a grant that I could apply for, and it's called the Vape-Free Futures Challenge Grant. And basically what it is, is it can give us at least $2,500, and we can get a grassroots campaign, and we can have a parent group, and maybe we can host town halls or do something as a PTA. Because we know that we're tight on cash, but I'm very concerned about it, because it just seems to be getting worse. And, you know, if my kids are doing the right thing and they don't see repercussions happening, I do kind of worry what that does to the wiring of his brain. One of the things that concerns me is, there are parents who I think know their kids do it, and don't do anything about it either, but there's also parents who don't know that their kids are doing it. And rather than post it on that Facebook group page, "That's why I'm here, and I hope people are watching and hear my voice," I'm not trying to tell people how to parent their kids, but as somebody who has suffered through addiction, and I know how hard it is, I have missing teeth, I have to wear partial denture, I want these kids to see what it can do to you, if you're not careful about your choices now. And my kids are aware with that, I'm honest with them, I said, "This is the way I grew up, I didn't grow up in the best environment, I'm trying to break a cycle, I quit drinking three years ago, I'm starting a program now to help me quit smoking, because I'm kind of on and off," like, I'm being honest with my kids. And I said, "This is bad, and this is why I chose to keep them away from certain family members who could not kick habits." You know, my father died of alcoholism a year and a half ago, they found him dead, because he just drank himself to death, and he went to his grave without speaking to me because of it. It's been hard to bear, so when I see all this stuff being drummed up, this is what I'm afraid of happening to some of these kids. And unfortunately, they're not your kids who are in extracurricular activities, they aren't. You can't force them to be in activities, I don't know what the solution is, but I made a phone call to try to ask for extra police presence at some of those places, I heard that they're going over there and they're walking around, and Jack is talking to people at school, and the right people at school, and being honest and saying, "This is what I see." And we're not trying to tattle on people, we're trying to help you, is basically the message. So whatever we can do, it needs to be more than this drug testing policy. So I'm willing to talk to whoever it is, because this is becoming a problem, and more than likely, if they have it at the town center park, they have it at their lockers at school, because it's happening right after school. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Thanks, Maggie. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes. Motion to approve the minutes of the July 30th, 2025 Board Retreat Special Meeting. Those minutes can be viewed online, and we also have approval of minutes from, motion to approve the minutes of the August 7th, 2025 Work Session. All audio recordings will be a permanent part of the minutes and are available upon request through the Treasurer's Office. Video recordings shall be maintained based on the ability of the selected digital online platform. Next, I'll turn it over to Dr. Reiva.
Thank you, Mrs. Hausum. I'm gonna ask Katie Drake, our new PTA Council President, as well as our student leaders, to come up to the podium to share some updates about what's going on in PTA Council, as well as the upcoming homecoming parade.
We came with flyers.
Thank you.
We have visual. All right. I wanted to give a quick council update. I am Katie Drake, I'm the new PTA Council President, and I just wanted to say thank you for all that you guys do. I have a deep appreciation for the board, being a board member, I can just imagine what that's like. I would love to see the council and the board partner more on things for our kids, I have a heart for that. One of my main goals of this presidency is to build community. Something that I've seen in the last couple of years of being here is that people don't want to volunteer as much anymore, we've seen kind of decline in volunteerism and membership, and I, first, it makes it really sad, but it makes it really sad for our kids. And I feel like it's easy to be isolated in this day and age, so I would love to build community, and I'm looking for ways to do that. And I have some ideas, and Dr. Reiva's been amazing, and hearing all my ideas and then working with me. So I wanted to ask all of you, as these like amazing kids come up here and share their, about the parade, but I wanted to ask each one of you, I know that there's like an ambassador program for board members, and I wanted to ask for you to join in and help build some of these floats with us. So I would love to have you come to a paint night, I would love to have you come and be a part of it. I know not everyone's thrilled with that, but I think it's really important for people to see you guys in the community, being with our kids, seeing what actually happens and why we're doing this. So that's my two cents. I look forward to working with all of you, and I'm gonna turn it over now to Mr. Ringler, who's gonna introduce.
You go first, Tim.
No, you go ahead, this is your group, it's not my group.
This'll be real quick. This is Vinnie and Aaliyah, and they are part of my Principal's Leadership Group, and I'm gonna let them talk to you about the, you guys were all at the parade last year, it's amazing. These two are hard at work, so I'll let them explain what's gonna happen.
Hi, my name is Vinnie Savani, I'm a senior this year at Strongsville High School, and so I'm involved in clubs like National Honor Society Key Club, and I'm also a swimmer, and then this is...
Hi, I'm Aaliyah, I'm a senior at Strongsville High School, I'm in lacrosse, the theater program, NHS, TRIAM, and I'm also part of this leadership group, and today we're here to talk to you just about the parade, and how we were trying to just get more spirit throughout the community, and more involved with all the groups, and connect all the schools, because we're trying to build one big, happy community.
Okay, so yeah, just as she said, we want us to like be able to connect the elementary schools with the high school, we want to be able to bring them all together, and I think we're working on, we're building that right now. Last time we just had a Spirit Squad meeting, there was like 40 people there from all over the city, it was really nice. If you'll direct your attention to your flyers we just handed out. So I know the homecoming theme this year is New York, so I made it New York themed, kind of. It shows like our agenda a little bit, and then what we need from you guys, we want your spiritual sport, or I guess like spirit, like Strongsville spirit, so I know Mrs. Drake said, helping maybe like go build a parade. I have paint on my fingers, because I was helping paint today for the Maraski float, because we were doing a little ocean parade. But if you guys just want to help them, or go even, it'll make the kids see, "Oh, that's a school board member, that's so cool," and like tie it back, make them want to be leaders in their school. And then also maybe financial support if needed, because we need to put signs out, advertise it. We asked a lot of sponsorships, we made letters, handwritten them, and then mailed them out. We haven't gotten many sponsorships back to us, I know Kiwanis donated, and then we're going to the Rotary Club next week. And now I just want to have time for you guys to ask any questions, any advice to give us, like last year positives or negatives for the parade that we can improve on this year.
Can you send us a copy of your sponsorship letter, and we can reach out to people we know, or if we have businesses of our own, we can then do that for you, so if you email it to all of us, we can circulate that letter around for you to get some sponsorships?
Yes, thank you.
Similarly, with the calendar for those events, for homecoming prep, I don't know that we have access to all of that, so if you could get that to us, that would be great.
Yep.
Thank you.
Most of the calendars are based off of each school's own calendar that they made, so I don't really have access to all of those, but you can, I can give you guys our next Spirit Squad meeting date, it's at September 11th at the library, it's at 6:30 PM if anyone wants to attend.
Are the floats this year gonna be better than last year? Because last year was pretty good. So I don't know how you're gonna beat last year, because some of them were really good. Like, they sign on that they have to make it better than last year, right?
Yeah, that's part of the assignment, really.
That's gonna be hard to beat.
We're all gonna go help as ambassadors, so they're gonna be better.
There were some really, really good ones last year.
Competition between you guys.
There is gonna be a competition, oh yeah.
I also feel like we need to talk about the throwing of candy this year. I'm not throwing it in the street, but actually towards people.
We actually are gonna go over that at our last meeting, when we will have Mr. Ringler there to kind of talk about, what is the proper way that you hand candy, and having, it's a great job being the principal at the high school.
You laugh, but I was bending over, picking up candy the whole route last year, and I couldn't walk the next day. I was like, "Oh, gosh."
Yeah, that is true. So I think we're trying to be more mindful of that, because I know the police would love for us not to throw it, but to give it, which is kind of hard with elementary schools, especially younger elementary schools, so we're working on it.
No, I think this is great, and I'm super excited. I personally missed the parade last year, because that would've been when I had a hiking accident, but so I'm super excited to be there in person this year.
Okay, thank you again, if anyone has any questions, feel free to reach out. Yep, thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, we would love if you guys would come to one of the leaders.
So we have grade-level leadership meetings, and Katie's a part of that with me. The next couple, the next one, next week, next Wednesday, and I think it's on the schedule that Ms. Rosalsky shared with you, Rich, but anyone who would like to come, that meeting is gonna be very parade-heavy, but there's about 260 leaders in the building coming to that meeting, so.
What's on?
It'll be, there's two, I'll tell you what, I will just, when I get home, I'll just share the invite with everybody, the whole meeting is really gonna be about the parade.
Great. And verifying the parade is September 18th at 6:30 PM.
Right, and the same route. We aren't gonna go anywhere else but on our campus, so. Thank you guys so much, I look forward to working with all of you, it's gonna be a great year. Whew. Thank you guys.
Katie, thank you for stepping up and being our council PTA president, we appreciate your dedication.
I'm very dedicated, my husband says.
Kevin noticed if this sheet's going out, the wrong date's on it, it says September 26th on here.
Oh, I didn't see that was last year's date.
Okay. So you're saying that's other people?
I don't have a date on mine.
Oh, I do, under here? Oh, wow. It's real small.
It's very small.
It's super small. Kevin saw it, not me, it was Hawkeyes.
I may need to get in here. Okay, I think we're ready for Treasurer's Report.
Thank you, Mrs. Hausum. I have a few items for your consideration tonight. The first two are the financial report for the month ending June 30th, 2025, and the second one is the financial report for the month ending July 31st, 2025. I'm gonna spend the most time on the first one, as it's for the June 30th, 2025, as it's the end of our fiscal year, so it's kind of recap of the last school year, fiscal year financials. What I have attached is my usual board reports, starting with a supplemental report. Overall, revenues, revenues are about $4 million, $4,25,540 lower than the previous year. The biggest decrease is in local taxes, the decrease is 4.6 million, and the reason for that is, as the renewal levy that expired at the end of the calendar year, the collections stopped during calendar year 2025. As our fiscal year overlaps two calendar years, we saw the first half reduction for the levy that's coming off in fiscal year 25, and for the current fiscal year that we're in, we're gonna see the full year reduction, so as we're comparing this upcoming school year to last school year, we'll see another decrease in local tax collections, as now we'll have a full year collection. So overall, total revenues totaled for the fiscal year 86.6 million, in comparison to last year of, or the previous year of 90.6 million, which is about a 4.4% lower. Moving on to expenditures, expenditures are about $4,438,000 more than the previous fiscal year, which equates to about 5.2%. The biggest increase is in salary and benefits, as that's our largest expense, which makes up about 80% of the budget. The increase there was about 5.4 million, and the increase is partly due to, last school year was the first year that the Estros Funds expired, so those positions shifted to the general fund, about 30 positions came over from Estros Funds to the general fund, and then also based on our negotiated agreements, any increases there, and healthcare increased by 3% that fiscal year. Purchased services, we saw an increase about $800,000, which is partly due, half of it's due to the mobile units, we spent about $352,000 last year with getting them set up, and also the annual rental fee, and utilities were about $300,000 higher than the previous fiscal year as well. The large reduction in other expenditures of the 1.7 million was due to during fiscal year '24, which was the prior fiscal year, it was higher due to a large textbook adoption, where we had to buy all-new elementary textbooks for the science reading, and that was about 1.5 million, so those expenses were, minus the textbook adoption, those expenses were kind of leveled from year to year. In comparison to the forecast for revenues, for the May forecast in comparison to actual, revenues were about $255,000 higher, which was timing of the Medicaid reimbursement that we received in June, and then also our threshold cost, was formerly known as catastrophic cost, was about $100,000 higher than forecasted, and also from what we received the prior year. So that is about a 0.3% difference from the May forecast, and then going to, back to the November forecast, the November forecast in comparison to the actual, we were about $451,000 lower, about 0.5%, 0.51% below, so less than 1%, so in comparison to both forecasts, the revenues were pretty close. And then looking at expenditures, in comparison to the May forecast, it was about $1.2 million difference, which equates to about 1.32%, and then comparison against the November forecast, we were about 1.4 million below, which equates to about 1.62%, so pretty close to the November and May forecast, based on the actuals. All of the bottom line, we're close for both areas, there were swings in other areas, I kind of brought it there, but overall, close, or satisfied with how the forecast went. Next meeting, not next meeting, next, the September regular meeting, September 25th, I'll be presenting the five-year forecast to the Board of Education. From there, we'll kind of go more in-depth into the forecast, and also, the timeframe has changed, based on the biennial budget, where this was a November forecast. For this transition year, the new filing deadline is October 15th, and since our September meeting is close to that deadline, we presented it at the September meeting along with our annual budget. And then the May forecast with the new biennial budget, that deadline got moved to February, and then the following year, the new fall deadline is August. So with those, my concern with those new filing dates is, the forecast may not be as accurate as they were in the past. One, from the expense side, August, we're still doing staffing, we kind of use a second payroll in August, that's when the new, all the new contracts for the year are paid, and then also, we don't receive our tax settlement until August, and then for the spring, we don't receive it until March, so there's gonna be some assumptions that we'll have to work around during those time periods versus having actuals. And then continuing with June update, looking at our cash balance, I'm gonna switch to the regular report. The cash balance for fiscal year '25, we started the year with $51.3 million in cash. As I mentioned, our total revenues were about 86.6 million, our expenditures were 89.8, which means our expenditures were $3.2 million higher than our revenues, so we began the trend of deficit spending, spending down our cash balance. So our ending cash balance was $48.1 million, and then with outstanding encumbrances, which are purchase orders, money that was encumbered that just haven't been liquidated yet, as we're a cash basis of accounting, so those will carry into actuals for fiscal year '26. Our unencumbered balance was $46.1 million, which is about 51.4% of total expenditures for the fiscal year. For that deficit spend, as we mentioned in the forecast in May, this was the first year that we've spent more than we brought on, it was mainly due with the renewal levy coming off, and as we see the full year coming off in fiscal year '26, we're projected a deficit spend of about $9 to $10 million this year, and then each year will gradually get bigger, until, in the May forecast, it was fiscal year '29, we were hit a cash deficit, so as, now I'm gonna redo the forecast, so we'll see where those numbers are as I do this process this month and present at the September meeting. So any questions on fiscal year '25 before I go into the July forecast, or the July report?
When do we have to start reporting a four-year forecast?
It'll be, I believe it'll be this forecast.
So is it possible, I guess we'll wait and see whether the deficit cliff is the year after the forecast, in which case it won't show?
Well, the fiscal year '29 would be the fourth year in this forecast, so.
I just want to make sure we don't have an unintended consequence where we're not paying attention.
Right. Any other questions for fiscal year '25? All right, moving on to fiscal year '26 for July, I don't have a supplemental report for this, as the forecast is in limbo, and we're on a temporary budget, so we haven't done one in the past, but there were a couple of things I wanted to highlight, I know these numbers are a little hard to see, so I'll try and make it a little bigger. This column, this column here, July of '25, fiscal year '26 versus July of '24, which was last fiscal year, as you'll notice, revenues, revenues for July totaled $6.5 million, in comparison to last July, which was $7.1 million, so we're $624,000 less. The biggest decrease was tax collections, again, it's due to the second half of the renewal levy coming off the book, so this was the first advance, we received our settlement in August, just the other day, so I haven't really gotten a chance to kind of analyze it, but I know in total, it's lower than last year, so I kind of wanted to highlight that, that our revenues are about 8.7% below last July, and then other revenues, you see a decrease of $133,000. Last year, in July, we received one-time dollars of $78,000 from the state for additional threshold costs that they had, threshold cost is now the new catastrophic cost, they just changed the term, we usually receive it in June, we received an additional $78,000 last year, and then also, interest income was about $37,000 less than last July, primarily the interest rate is a percent lower, and also lower cash balance as well, so both those two items contribute to a lower interest income, but overall, our interest income, for the time being, last year was $2.4 million in comparison to $2.7, so still generating a good amount of money, bringing it back to the district. And then expenditures, expenditures are $768,000 higher this July in comparison to last July. Salary and benefits make up the largest component, and then also purchased services, which was more timing of expenses, but utilities were about $90,000 higher this July than last July. And transportation also was about $48,000 higher for payment in lieu for those kids that don't ride the bus that we pay, and that was because in the previous biennial, and it just went into effect, the rate doubled for what we were paying, so we saw increases Any questions there? There was one more item I wanted to go over. Any questions so far? Move up to cash balance real quick for July. So for July, beginning this fiscal year, our... So for July, beginning this fiscal year, our beginning cash balance was forty eight point one million. Our revenues were six point five, our expenditures were eight point seven. Our revenues under expenditures were two point two. So we've, for July, we've spent more than we brought in, which is typical because our tax collections are five times a year. So August is going to show a higher number because it's our large tax collection. But I just want to illustrate how our cash kind of ebbs and flows. We're looking at the fiscal year end is kind of a point in time. As you see, July is kind of a law point, August will increase. And then we kind of rely on those cash balances each month until we get another settlement in March where it increases and decreases again. So as of the end of July, cash balance was thirty nine point nine million, which was about forty two percent of the temporary budgeted expenses for the fiscal year. And then I'm going to jump back to the last fiscal year real quick to kind of go over the O seven O fund. Accidentally forgot about it, but we began the fiscal year twenty five with twenty five point six million. We had interest about nine hundred twenty nine thousand, which gave us available resources of twenty six point five. Since the inception, we've generated about one point five million dollars worth of interest. Below are listed the projects we've had. We had about five point three million dollars in projects as they're listed. Through the fiscal year, we've spent five hundred ninety thousand. A lot of those bills are now being paid as the projects were done throughout the, throughout the summer. At the end of the year, we had about four point six, four point seven encumbered tied up in those purchase orders for the summer projects, leaving us with a remaining balance of twenty one point three million dollars. And that concludes my financial, or the two months if there's any questions on those before I get into the next topics.
Any questions? All right.
All right. The next item is the temporary appropriation measure. There's two adjustments. The first one is for the O fourteen account, increasing by twenty one thousand three hundred seventy seven dollars for our facility usage to our fund account. We have a, what that fund is, as if we ever run out the stadium, mostly the OSHA tournaments, there's a rental fee, so those rental fees go into that account. And we use those funds for any repairs at the stadium. If any of you are at the football game on Friday, missing an exciting game, if you would have noticed that the scoreboard went out right before the game. So we're going to use some of these, the repair is not going to cost that much, but we're just budgeting to the cash that's available to use those funds to fix the scoreboard, which I believe Jason kind of has that in the works. He's giving a thumbs up. And then the other adjustment is the O seven O Capital Projects Fund. At the last board meeting, we approved the, or the board approved the contract to GPD for the K twelve planning services. So that's to pay for that contract. And then the next two items require, each require a separate vote. Item four is an annual required item based on our board policy. And just in short, so I'm not reading the whole thing. It's if we invest in, part of our investment strategy and our investment policy, if we invest in commercial paper, they have to be of a certain grade and rating. Our investments are done by meter financial, by meter investments. And every year I have to report those commercial paper holdings to the Board of Education and to the Ohio Department of Education and the Otter's Office. So it has to be done by August thirty first. So attached is the, to this exhibit is the, the report that's for the fiscal year for commercial paper. And they can only be a certain percentage of our, of our total investments.
Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavchak, second by Mrs. Bissell. Any other questions for George? Go ahead, take the roll.
Ms. Stavchak?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Housen?
Yes. Motion carries.
And the next item is appointing our delegate and alternate delegate for the OSBA Capital Conference Business Meeting on November seventeenth, twenty twenty five. So Mrs. Housen, we can do a motion and then I can turn it over to you.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavchak, second by Mr. Griffin. So now we just take nominees from the floor?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have anybody to nominate our delegate for the OSBA conference?
I'll nominate Laura Housen as our delegate.
Do we need a second?
No, we could just do both.
Okay, okay. Do both, okay. And then we also need to.
Unless there's any objections.
Oh, do we have any objections? All right, we also need to nominate an alternate in case I can't be there. Do we have a nomination for an alternate?
I'd like to nominate Kevin Griffin.
Kevin is being nominated. Do we have any?
Is Kevin going?
Yes.
Say that again? Is Kevin going? Yes.
Okay, so we have myself nominated as the delegate for the conference and Kevin as the alternate.
And then this year, just for additional, and this, this year, I think they started the last few years, but you have now be, in order to be an alternate or delegate, you have to be registered for the conference.
Okay.
So Kevin is attending the conference.
That makes a lot of sense. All right. George, you take the roll.
Ms. Stavchak?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Housen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And with that, that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, George.
Thanks.
Turn it back over to you, Dr. Iba.
Thank you, Ms. Housen. I'm asking Jason to come on up to the podium. Jason, there's a clicker up here for you. So a couple of meetings ago, we had a, we've been having conversations about other needs, right? Other needs of our May twenty six bond project. And we had discussions about a variety of things. And so the board asked and, you know, to get an update as to when we were ready to share an athletic facilities master plan. So Jason has been hard at work over the past month and a half putting this together. So we wanted to give him an opportunity to share with the board what he's, what he's got in place in terms of some of the things that were a part of the other needs, some of the things that have been brought up just in conversation. And then a holistic look at our athletic facilities and prioritization of his list. So turn it over to you, Jenny to go, Jenny. Jason.
Oh, what's your face? I have a twin brother. I'm called the wrong.
That's right. That's okay. Jason.
So first, Board Admin, thank you so much for the opportunity to get up here and talk about some of my vision and our community's vision. For the athletic facilities, this is something that's really important to me. You guys have a meeting packed with stuff and you find time to allow me to talk about this. So thank you guys very much. Looking at the Athletic Facilities Master Plan, there were four goals and objectives that I wanted to accomplish with, with this process. And the first was identifying the department's biggest needs and wants collaboratively with all of our stakeholders. The next thing was develop strategic solutions to some of our biggest challenges that were identified through the first step. And then the third one is ensuring that our athletic facilities remain premier. We're a premier, premier district and we try to keep everything premier here. And then the fourth thing is provide more next level experiences for our student athletes. And by that, I mean experiences that are unique to Strongsville, that kids walk away from here with stories to share with their families and their friends for many years to come. So what, what I did was I started with the five projects that were discussed previously through, through board meetings and the athletic facilities, I'm sorry, the, the Facilities Committee for the District. And these four things were identified, plus the multi-sport air structure, which we talked about last meeting. So when I went through this process, I, going back to the collaborative effort in this, I wanted to poll four major groups to start. One is our coaching staff, the other is the booster board members, the third is the youth sport organization board members, and then the fourth was the athletic office. Just to see what everyone thought in, in terms of what our priorities were, what they should be, and then what is needed, wanted, or a non-priority based on these five projects. So there, there's a lot of numbers up there. They don't make a whole lot of sense. So I figured I would try to make some type of scoring system to better explain what all these numbers mean. So what I did for the need, non-priority list was I assigned a point value to needs, wants, and non-priorities. So one point was assigned to need, two points to want, three points to not a priority. I averaged everything out and the scores that you see in the second last row there is, is what those scores are. In this case, if it's closer to a one, it means it's more of a need. If it's closer to a three, it's more of a non-priority. So tabulating all those scores, the, the project that came out as the biggest need was the baseball and softball turf. Then the, the second highest was the multi-sport air structure. Wherever you see green on here, that means it was the best score. Orange is, is the second best score. Then looking at the priority, I asked all these groups to rank these five projects in order, with one being top priority, five being the least priority. And I averaged all those scores out. And the, the top priority based on that was again, the baseball and softball turf. And then the, the second highest priority was the field house and the multi-sport air structure. Any questions about this system? Later on in the slideshow, I have all the different groups of people that we polled and what their results were individually. So the first thing, so going forward, I'm going to look at the, the two projects that ranked highest, and that is the baseball turf and the, the air structure. So baseball and softball turf, why is this a priority? So the first thing I looked at, based on the feedback, was the number of games that don't get played or number of games that are negatively affected by our current playing conditions. And what I found was nineteen percent of all of the baseball and softball games, on average, over the past four years, were negatively affected by, by our playing conditions. And there's, there's kind of two paths to what is a negatively impacted game. One is a game that was postponed because of weather or field conditions that was never made up because we ran out of time in the season. And then the other is all the times we had to flip a home game to an away site based on whether they had field turf or just better playing conditions that day. We also had a couple of scenarios where we rented out a neutral site just to get a, a key game in that we, we needed to complete the season. So nineteen percent of the games were, were impacted and that's, I mean, that's, that's a large number. It's, it's a huge number. There's no other sports in the district where that, that number of events or contests are impacted. So the next thing I looked at was, was again, we want to try to keep our facilities premier. So I started looking at what other schools have baseball turf and or softball turf. So I looked, I think it was across maybe six counties or so. There was a hundred seventy four schools, eleven and a half percent of them were, had either baseball and or softball turf. And that number is important, I, I think, because one, it's not going to stick at that, that number for, for much longer. Every year you see one, two, three more school districts in northeast Ohio that, that turf their, their baseball and softball facilities. Then on top of that, I, I kind of equate this to many years ago where everybody played football on natural grass. And then slowly but surely more and more schools turfed their football fields. And today it's hard to find a natural grass football stadium in northeast Ohio at a high school. So with all that said, you know, I don't have a, how long it would take to get to even half the schools in northeast Ohio having turf, but I, I will say I think it's coming and it's sooner than later. So it's, I think this is something that we need to keep our eye on and, and have a focus of ours going forward. So having said that, investing that much money into, into two sport teams, that's a lot, right? It's, it's a lot of money to turf a field for just two teams. But if we, if we reconfigure the outfield fences on the baseball field, because that space is so large, we can put a football, soccer, lacrosse field in the outfield there that can be used for predominantly practices to help alleviate some of the spatial issues that we have in, in some of our venues. But in addition, we could host a lower level game there as well if, if needed. So if, if it was done that way, that would equate to about four hundred kids benefited, that, that would benefit from this project. And then the last point I have there is the amount of time that maintenance spends on cutting the grass, grooming those fields. There's just an incredible amount of time spent on that. And I can't count how many times where it rained, it was a soaker like the day before, two days before. We have a key game on a day, maintenance, they, they work all day to drag the field, put down drying agent, line the field, do all the things that they need to get it ready, and then it rains again at four o'clock and the game's canceled. All that work went, went for naught. So this project would, would help alleviate all of this. And that's, so I have some graphics at the end of the slideshow that talk about how I came up with the nineteen percent and, and the eleven and a half percent. I wasn't going to go over that today unless there were specific questions. If not, I'll move on from the baseball and softball turf. Yes?
So Jason, your, your recommendation would be to turf both infield and outfield?
Correct, correct.
What are the benefits for doing that? You know, I, I love the, the notion that more, you'd have more activities for more sports. Are you seeing that around the area that it is both infield and outfield that are turf?
Yeah, so I, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to burn ahead to that, that one graphic. So if you look, if you look on the right side there, that graphic has all of the turf fields in northeast Ohio. The, the green boxes or the green checks are where it's infield only. The brown is, is everything. And I, I think you'll see the most, at least in baseball, most, it's, it's, it's the whole thing. And what's proved to be difficult with infield only is it doesn't solve all the problems. We, you know, in our case, our outfield grass has standing water for, for a large portion of the spring. So if we were to do infield only, then we'd have to consider French drainage or, or something out there to, to fix that and remedy that, that problem. Talking to other ADs that have infield only, I, I talked to West Yaga and North Ridgeville. And there, it's a constant battle with guys wearing the appropriate types of spikes between the grass and the turf areas. The, the dirt that washes out into the turf area needs to be cleaned up pretty often. And those are probably their two biggest concerns with that. So yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. All right, heading back, are there any more questions about baseball and softball turf?
You mentioned band can benefit baseball, softball band.
Yes.
Are you saying that we could put the entire marching band out there for?
Correct.
Maybe band camp?
For, for band camp, right now they, they have at least half of their practices in the parking lot. So they would, they would be given, I think it's Tuesdays or Wednesdays, they would be given the turf if this project were to come to fruition. So they would have all of their, their practices on a, a football field.
Because Jason, as you talked, there's enough space to have a, a full football field, soccer field in, in this space, correct?
With, with some reconfiguration of the fencing, yes. Okay.
Jason, real quick, is there any reason not to reconfigure?
I don't, I don't, that would be my recommendation to, to reconfigure, yes. I mean, extra cost.
Other than the cost and the addition, there's no negative consequence to the game of baseball or, or softball?
So there's a, there's a couple of different configurations that would be considered. One would, would be a bump out of a part of the fence and you could have portable fencing to, so, so your, your outfield fence is still an arc rather than some, some odd shape, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Okay, which brings us to the multi-sport air structure, or as it was called previously, the dome, for lack of better words. And after we talked about this last meeting, I, I got so many texts and calls from people like, are you doming Pacatan Stadium? Like, are you putting a dome on it? Is this like Cleveland Brown Stadium two point oh? You know, what isn't, what is going to be inside of that? So I think, I want to spend just a couple of moments kind of going over what it could be, what options are, and, and then, and then we'll, we'll go from there. So to start, you could put anything in there. As I was researching. As I was researching companies, there's companies, or there's places that have water parks inside of there. Obviously, we're not looking to do that, but...
But we could.
Yeah. So tennis court, I mean, there's so many different things you can do with this. So an air, a multi-sport air structure is a non-brick-and-mortar sports venue or facility. It is a bubble inflated by air. And this is what it looks like in most cases. So inside of it, you often see turf, a full turf field. In our case, if we were to move forward with this project, I would like to see full turf, soccer, football, and lacrosse field in there. This just shows football lines, but you can easily put all three in there at the same time. Additionally, there's air structures that are basketball courts. There are air structures that are baseball facilities. And if this would end up being a focus and a project that the district would like to move forward with, my recommendation would be something similar to this, where you have elements of each one in there. I mean, this is a gigantic one. This is nothing, this is something that would be overkill. But my recommendation would be two sport courts for basketball, volleyball, and other courts, and then a full turf field behind that. And the reason for that recommendation is to solve one of, at least in the athletic department's pinch points, one of our biggest pinch points is the amount of congestion or the amount of lack of availability in our, on our turf, in our gymnasiums. And these are all of the reasons that we have, not all, but most of all the reasons that we have and some of the issues that we have with those spaces. I'll roll through a couple of these real quick. We often have teams that train or practice till 10:00 p.m. Sometimes, because school teams get first priority, that ripple effect works its way down to the youth levels, which you have third graders who could practice until 10:00 p.m. Dance, and then offseason soccer training, they've now scheduled their practices and training on Sundays because of the space that's missing. Football, baseball, softball, lacrosse have all rented outside facilities for these same reasons. I mentioned this before, band is in the parking lot. Freshman football is in the grass most of the time. High school basketball, all three levels often practice together in the same gym at the same time because of these reasons. Cheer, and then the indoor track team throughout the winter practice have a lot of their practices behind the bleachers in the gym. And then because soccer plays on natural grass, and it's rainy, it's wet throughout a lot of the year, they play on soft field conditions, which causes damage, and then extra repair by our maintenance department. So before I move on from this slide, are there any questions about any of this?
How often does damage happen to the structure where it loses air, since it's not really?
So I talked pretty extensively with a couple different companies about that. And if there is some type of puncture, there are patches that are, that last throughout the warranty of the structure. The warranties on these things are twenty years. There could be what's called a catastrophic puncture. If a snowplow comes through and rips a huge hole into it, there are ways to repair that, temporarily repair that to get you by until a full repair can be made by the company.
Did they say someone's actually done that?
Yes. Yeah, real-life example, yeah. Yeah, so it's, so an issue with that is how you build the structure. Some people build them right on the ground, like flat on the ground on blacktop or concrete, which makes you more susceptible to anything running into it on the ground. Other places build up a small wall, like a two-foot wall or something, to get it up off the ground. That way, there's a buffer between anything that goes around it and the actual structure itself.
How does heating and cooling work for that if it's at ground level? Or is it very expensive to keep cool or warm?
It is, so I think...
It's a couple slides up.
Yeah, a couple slides up. So one of the points I made on here is the utility costs. So we submitted our utility rates to one of these companies that calculated the rate for us, and it would be about $200,000 a year.
It's a year, okay.
In utility costs. For comparison, the high school is about $425,000 per year in utility costs.
The whole high school?
So any other questions on this portion?
The rental fees that existing teams are spending? Do we have anything beyond anecdotal?
I'm sorry.
Do we have anything beyond anecdotal numbers on how much we're spending to rent other facilities?
So I can share that baseball and softball, the district pays $7,500 a year to rent these spaces, and then they want more time than the district pays for, so they also pay another $7,500 to premier. The other ones, I'd have to talk to the coaches specifically. I don't have those numbers offhand, but I can certainly get them.
Yeah, I mean, again, the idea is, are we being smarter with the money? Or if it's small amounts?
Sure.
I don't think it pushes the needle.
Sure, okay.
What would it look like custodial-wise to take care of and maintain the grounds?
So I talked to Brechner about that, the last point in their additional staffing needs. There would be anywhere from one to two maintenance or custodial employees required for this project. And then in addition to that, if there is public use granted to the residents of Strongsville, there would have to be some type of access control with a front desk or something along those lines. But that would, of course, then require staff as well. So before I get into the rest of these points, I do want to talk about the, who would benefit from a project like this. And by far, any of the projects that we've considered, this would benefit the most number of teams and athletes. There are sixteen different programs that would benefit directly from a structure of this nature. They're all listed there. And when you add up all the rosters of those teams, it's over eight hundred kids per year, so. But having said that, going back to this slide, I've introduced this project to all of you as this unicorn thing that's going to solve all of our problems, and it's going to be this nice, perfect thing. But there are these things that would have to get considered by the district before moving forward. First and foremost is the aesthetics of it. This is very much so a function-over-form project. It benefits so many kids, so many people, but you have a bubble, a white bubble on campus somewhere. So that would be a consideration. We talked about the utility costs. The prices that you'll see on a later slide, that does not include bathroom structures, so that would be an additional cost to what you have here. We might not have to build bathrooms for this. City code might require us to build bathrooms, but having something that big that would have that much use would, it would be, if not required, it would be nice to have bathrooms there, so. So moving along here to the project priority levels, I took everything that we talked about in the previous slides. I put it into Steve Brechner's five-year critical assessment or critical needs sheet, and I ranked it two different ways. I had the priority levels, one through five, one being the highest. And then in each priority level, I ranked it from my perspective, from most important in that level to least important. The prices you'll see in the middle column there, those are estimates, not official quotes. And then there's a couple of other projects that we are awaiting quotes back on. We are currently having our seating areas at the stadium and our gymnasiums assessed by a company that's done that for us in the past. They wrapped up today, and they should have us a report sometime next week. So one other thing I'd like to note on here, in the notes column, you'll see some eliminate if this happens. So I put everything on there. If one project happens, I think it's safe to eliminate some of these other ones, and the notes kind of spell out what that is. So outside of that, I don't have a whole lot more for you today. Again, beyond the slideshow, there's all the data points that I have that I talked about in the beginning of the slideshow here today. But having said that, are there any questions?
Great job, Jason.
Thank you.
Really nice job. Thank you for doing this. Couple random questions, and then I think some more on point. What are the plans for the tennis courts, the old tennis courts?
So they will eventually be taken out. When we built the new tennis courts, no additional money was going to be put into those ones, so they will run their course and then be eventually taken out.
And so as we look at your priorities on the slide that you're previously showing, from your time here, if you had to pick your top three, which would those be?
Top three projects on the list?
Yeah.
So top one is baseball and softball turf, hundred percent. I feel like that is such a strong need. The, I'm going to say the bleacher stuff, the repair, the, after talking to these guys, there's going to be some repairs needed based on safety reasons, so that's going to have to get done. But if I'm looking at the new projects that we're looking at, top one is baseball and softball turf. The next one would be the multi-sport air structure. If it can't be that, fieldhouse would replace it in there. And then a third would be some type of additional turf space somewhere. P.O. fields, media center fields. There could be some conversations to do it elsewhere in the district or the city, but additional turf space would be the third one.
And that would be in addition to the multi-use of the baseball, softball field turf that would provide access to a lot of other teams and programs?
Correct, yeah.
What did the baseball and softball coaches share with you in terms of reconfiguring outfield and/or the whole outfield fence, and then also the whole, the notion of the full field being turf?
Sure. So they both prefer both full-field turf because they've seen the issues at away sites with infield only. I did not discuss the outfield reconfiguration with softball because it wouldn't impact their field, but for baseball, I did. And his response was, whatever we need to do to get this done, if we need to impact more kids, let's do it. His preference would be to have a baseball-only facility, but he's okay either way.
So baseball, softball, the cost, if I'm looking at this right, would be about approximately $2.7 million to surf both fields.
Correct.
And we've been talking about this for a really long time. I feel like my last child graduated in 22. My husband was the booster president, and we were talking about it back then. If we wait and put this on the bond, like, all right, so say we just say, yep, we're going to pay for this today. We said it wouldn't be done until spring of '27. Is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
So if we wait, we'll be pushing this potentially to even further down the road, '28 possibly. And we've talked recently, then more recently, about baseball and softball, so that they can fundraise.
Yeah, Jason got me up to speed with some conversations he had, and they feel that they, specifically baseball feels that they have a pathway to raise some significant dollars in collaboration with this project. So Jason, do you have anything you want to share on that?
Sure, yeah. So I talked to Coach P., Coach Colin extensively at this, and when I had conversations with him, he had mentioned numerous times, I can raise a significant amount of money for this project if needed. His family has some real strong business ties throughout the community, throughout northeast Ohio. And when I asked him, what is your most conservative figure, like, it would be a failure for you if you raised this much? And he said $300,000.
So that does not include softball chipping in or anybody else?
Correct.
And what's the feedback been from the rest of the booster club, general athletic booster club? Are they?
They're all for it. So if, I'll pull up their...
I see that they've expressed an interest in making it a priority, but how about their fundraising prowess around this project?
So I'm confident that they could raise some significant dollars for this project. Previously, in our gymnasium, we installed some video scoreboards, and over the course of ten years, was it Cameron? They paid for that entire project, which was over $200,000, if I remember right?
I don't remember the exact figures.
Multiple hundred thousand dollars, so they, we'd have to sit down and discuss terms and things of that nature, but I think they could get behind this and support it at a high level.
I was doing math on my phone, not texting. I was going to ask George, but I needed to do some math. You know, I would like to see us really push this forward as soon as possible and commit to a certain percentage that the district would pay for out of certain funds, but we'll need other support. I really appreciate the point that it's not just softball and baseball. That would be benefiting from this. So thank you for putting this together, and I would like to have a conversation, whether it's today or at our next board meeting, of how we get this across the finish line sooner than later. You're right, we'll be in 2029 before we know it. And so we've got, we have some dollars to set aside, and we should use those to support this project. Can we put a logo on the outfield?
Sure can.
That doesn't have any issues with the game?
No, there's other facilities that have logos, infield, outfield, so.
Okay, good.
Can you put a logo on the very top of the bubble?
Yes, you can.
So when you all say logos, you mean corporate partners, not just our big?
Donation.
If someone wants to give us a check to put an S on the outfield, I'm happy to do that.
I just wanted to make sure we were very clear about it.
It sounds to me Richard wants to donate for this logo on the...
I'll donate, it'll be a very small logo. No, but yeah, I mean, that's what, similar to Pecatan Stadium and Serpentine Field at Pecatan Stadium. What would the timeline be on the multi-sport air structure as well? I love that language.
Yes, yes. It's a mouthful. A lot harder to say than dome, but that's the common term across the industry, so. I'd have to go back and look, I don't remember, but it was a matter of months, six-ish months.
I was actually told twenty weeks, so.
Yeah, GPD, who's doing the pre-bond, worked with us. They're specifically targeting this as well, so they'll be able, I think we meet with them next week, maybe. They'll have an update for us.
And I don't want to derail this, this is probably more Haley's area, but we have a lot of birds in the area, so just making sure that they, I'm being somewhat serious because this has been a problem before, like where they land and how they spot these things when it's so white. So I don't know how we solve that, I just raised that as a point.
Yeah, I mean, that's a fair point. I'll talk to some of the other facilities that have that and see.
Can you picture geese just sitting on top of it?
Well, they bounce off of it because they're going to land, yeah.
I'm just picturing them standing on top of it, just...
Yeah, they'll slide off.
I have one other question. I'm not sure it's directed at Jason, though, but I know you're looking at this from the athletic perspective, but as we're talking and continuing to have conversations about the air structure, I want to make sure that our other groups that might be able to use that would chime in. So we have a really exhaustive list, so I'm thinking things like homecoming, commencement, other uses outside of just sports. So I don't know if Bill can contribute to that or who's in charge, but if we could get that as we continue our conversation. Thank you.
I'm assuming it would trickle down to our youth sports as well, being able to use it.
Correct, yeah. So if you look here, this, all the red you hear is our, this is our current schedule in the winter. All the red that you see is issues, whether it's rental, our teams have to rent, are going until 10:00 at night, practicing on Sundays, any number of reasons. If this structure was built where you see green is where all those teams better position themselves. And then at the bottom there, that's what would be in the air structure. And you see on most nights, we end at either 5:00 or 7:00 p.m., so that would be open for rentals, youth organizations, and other things.
So the priority today is baseball, softball?
Correct. In my eyes, yes.
And we hope that this gives guidance as we take a look at those other needs as to how this fits. And we hope that this gives guidance as we take a look at those other needs as to how this fits in. Like, like I think Jason said, we've got to do something with bleachers. It's not an exciting project, but we've got to do something, and that has to be factored in as we think about these other projects that are great enhancements. There's functional things that we've got to fix and address that are going to come down the line. And I think your plan did a nice job of outlining those in conjunction with the additions.
It's kind of like picking between a new roof and a new kitchen.
That's right.
That's a good analogy. Yeah.
Which one did you pick?
The roof.
You didn't get an air dome?
Multi, yeah, multi, yeah. Sportier obstruction.
Jason, I appreciate you've given us a lot to digest. Hopefully, we can come back in a couple of weeks. We can talk more about the fundraising aspect for the baseball softball, maybe get some more concrete numbers there, and maybe then we can come back to discuss as a board what, you know, we would be able and willing to chip in to help.
Sure.
Is that a good plan for everybody? Okay.
All right. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Jason.
Moving on in the agenda, we'll go to our director reports, and we're going to start with Steve with Business Services.
Good evening, everyone. There's three items for your consideration. The first one is the copier and printer maintenance agreement. That is going to be coming from the general fund, and it is with Dex. That's consent, right, George?
Yes, consent.
Okay. Security service agreement. This is an agreement with Allied Universal for services at Strongsville High School for the two years. And the third item is a correction to the agenda from April 24th. The district elementary school's parking lot ceiling and repairs. We had to add $850 to this purchase for all of the paint that was done over at Surar to reconfigure the traffic pattern over there for this coming school year.
That is an action item, so do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stopcheck, second by Mr. Griffin. Do we need an explanation as to why Steve had to buy more paint? Hearing none?
We, as, as we've shared before, based on the change in busing radius and increased car traffic, Surar was one of those buildings where we had to look at creating, it had natural backup on, on the main road. So Steve and the maintenance team did some reconfiguration of the parking lot, the playground, and to get three lanes of, you know, two, one bus and two cars flowing through there. So arrival has gone smoothly. Dismissal is getting better. So it's, the team's done a nice job, though.
George, can you take the roll?
Ms. Lotcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Housel?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Steve, and if I could just, real quick, we had a community member reach out to me. He couldn't be here until like the end of October, so he wanted me to make a comment on his behalf for you and your team. On, if I could just read this real quick. "On behalf of the girls and boys' high school soccer programs, SHS Athletic Boosters and Strongsville Soccer Organization, I wanted to take a moment to recognize some key individuals from the SCF staff who assisted us over the past few months. The soccer locker rooms and the fieldhouse at the Walter Earnfeldt Soccer Complex were renovated thanks to several donors and the incredible work of the SCS maintenance team led by Keith Simak. The team managed the renovation of two locker rooms, which significantly updated the facility for our student athletes. Keith was, was great to work with throughout the entire project from initial planning to execution, and with changes along the way. A huge thanks to all of those who were involved in the project, namely Dr. Reiba, George Aganostu, Steve Brechner, Jason Kepler, Keith Simak, Mike Cummins, Dan Wilson, Jerry Paschal. Thank you again for helping us with this project, Brian Junkerberg." So I just wanted to share that with you.
Very kind of him. Yeah, it was a pleasure.
Thank you.
That's nice. Thank you. Next, Erin's going to come up with the curriculum report.
Good evening. I have four, I'm sorry, no, four items tonight for your consideration. First one is a field placement affiliation agreement between the University of Akron and Strongsville City School District. And then the next three items are service agreements for part-time Title I teachers or tutors with our non-public schools. So this is the pass-through portion of the budget. Item two is an agreement between Forge Edu LLC in the amount of $4,485, and that is with Incarnate Word. Item three is PSI and PSI Associates in the amount of $9,104.99 for an agreement with St. Joseph and John Schools. And item four is PSI, PSI Associates, in the amount of $2,276.25, and that is for St. Albert the Great School.
Any questions for Erin?
Thanks.
Thanks, Erin. Next is Andy with the Student Service Report.
Good evening, members of the board. I have two items for you this evening. The first is for STEPS Educational Group. It's a recommendation that we enter into an agreement with STEPS Educational Group for the placement of a student with a disability for the school year 2025-26 in the amount of $85,000. The second is also PSI affiliates, and this is a recommendation we enter into an agreement with PSI in the amount of $34,698.26 for speech and language pathologist services and intervention specialist services to service students at St. Joseph, St. John for the 25-26 school year.
Any questions for Andy?
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. And finally, Ryan's going to come up with the Human Resource Report.
Hey, good evening, everyone. I have the following items in Human Resources for your consideration. Item one, resignations, non-certificated. Item two, retirements, non-certificated. Item three, appointments, certificated. Item four, appointments, non-certificated. Item five, appointments, certificated supplemental contracts. Item six, appointment, non-certificated supplemental contract. Item seven, appointments, certificated athletic supplemental contracts. Item eight, appointments, non-certificated athletic supplemental contracts. Item nine, appointments, home instruction tutors. Item 10, change in status, non-certificated. Item 11, contract recommendations, certificated continuing contract. Item 12, contract recommendation, non-certificated. Item 13, educational and experience upgrades. Item 14, additional time, certificated. Item 15, athletic game worker pay rates for 2025-2026. Item 16, leaves of absence, certificated. Item 17, leaves of absence, non-certificated. Item 18, unpaid leaves, certificated. Item 19, unpaid leave, non-certificated. Item 20, volunteers, chaperones, and item 21, volunteers, coaches.
Questions for Ryan?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. We will move on to our report on Polaris Career Center. Mrs. Bissell?
Thank you. Couple of things to report. At our August 12th meeting, so the first one, getting ready for this school year, the board had the opportunity to tour the new space, the construction space for our ERA project that stands for Engineering, Robotics, and Automation. That's set to be completed in the next couple of months here, so be on the lookout for ribbon cutting in the spring. But the space is phenomenal. It's huge, and I'm really looking forward to seeing all the equipment in there and getting those programs off the ground. So more to come on that. Other exciting news is that Polaris is celebrating its 50th anniversary this year. So there will be events related to that coming up throughout this year, so I will share those as they become available. One of them of note already is they are accepting nominations for the Polaris Hall of Fame. So if you know anyone who has graduated from Polaris and made a big impact in their career or in their community, or a business or community partner who's helped shape Polaris, and I know we have a lot of those here in Strongsville. So we have until next Friday to submit nominations for that, and you can find more information at the Polaris website backslash Hall of Fame. So please do look into that if you know someone who's worthy of acknowledgement. Another really exciting event is coming up in October. This is the first time they've ever done this. And based on our success of our trick-or-treat here, I know this is going to be a really successful event. So if you have younger students who are still into the trick-or-treat event, they're doing a community open house and trick-or-trade event on Thursday, October 30th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, where they will be indoors, so they will not have to contend with the weather. And they'll have trick-or-treat stations, giveaways, hands-on activities, self-guided tours, et cetera, snacks. There'll be snacks. So if you have young ones who might enjoy this, or even older ones who want to get a peek inside what's going on at Polaris and the facility there, this is a great event that's open to the community. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. A report on legislation. Richard, Michelle?
Thank you, Ms. Housel. Things, things have been quiet in Columbus since the biennium budget was passed. The legislation is gearing up. Their break is, will be over soon, and they'll be back at work in Columbus. There were a few bills that affect the school district announced. The three that I wanted to discuss or bring to the attention of, of our citizens is, House Bill 420 would ban ballot language that calls for a levy to be in effect for a continuing period of time instead of a set number of years. House Bill 421 would allow voters to reduce inside millage, which is an unvoted property tax that increases the burden for property owners. And then the third one, which I personally found the most interesting, House Bill 422 would change the threshold of votes needed to pass levies. And the part that I don't quite, I mean, again, it's just interesting to me. Levies of one mil or below would require a simple majority to pass. Levies between one mil and two mils would require a 60% majority to pass. And levies over two mils would require a 66% majority to pass, which is just interesting, and I'll leave it at that. But those bills have been introduced. It's very, very early in the legislative stage. But obviously, we're still grappling with how to invest and pay for our schools and anything else that we pay for with public tax dollars, and a lot of demand and need for redress on taxes in general. So more to come, and we'll keep everyone informed. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. City Council, they have been on recess this summer, and their next meeting is this coming Tuesday evening, 7:00 PM in the mayor's court. Richard, did you want to add anything to that?
That's it.
All right, thank you. Strongsville Education Foundation, Kevin or Haley?
Yeah, I'll take that. So the casino night is on November 22nd, 2025. So the call to action was for anyone and everyone who can provide donations to support the, to support the event. Please do, both from the auction standpoint, as well as buying tables and purchasing tables. In fairly good shape, but do need a strong push from, from here until, to the event. We had a good meeting last week. And then from a financial standpoint, they're, they seem to be in very good shape, very strong. So that's, it feels like a good spot. So all focus right now is on the November 22nd event. So if you all know anyone that would like to donate or buy a table, please, please let us know.
Great, thank you. Strongsville PTA Council.
The first meeting of the year is this coming Thursday, September 4th, right here in this room at 9:30 AM, if anyone cares to join us.
Thank you. Southwest, we have not had any current meetings there. Next, our Board Committee reports. Finance Committee.
We are working on a date. Do we have one yet, George?
No, we're working on a date for the week of September 29th. So we should have that locked up within the next few days and put a posting out when it's, for the announcement. So the week of the 29th, which would be the, between the September 25th board meeting and the October 9th, which would be following the five-year forecast presentation.
Great. Thank you. Policy Committee.
We have a meeting Monday, October 6th at 1:00 PM here.
Thank you. Facilities Committee. We did meet last week, and Steve went over all the summer projects. And again, another big shout out to him and his crew. They accomplished a lot this summer, from roofs to parking lots. We handled a lot of it internally, but then worked with partners out in the community. And again, they got, they got a lot done. Our next meeting will be November 18th, 2025, 6:30 PM. And we are meeting at the Early Learning Preschool to take a tour there. Business Advisory Council Committee.
Our next meeting is September 5th at 7:30 AM here.
All right. Got a lot of meetings coming up. Great, all right. That brings us to the Adoption of Consent Calendar. Action by the Board of Education and Adoption of Consent Calendar at this point of the agenda means that all items appearing in this agenda denoted as type dash action consent, which items constitute the consent calendar, are adopted by one single motion unless a member of the board or the superintendent requests that such items be removed from the consent calendar and voted upon separately. Do we have anything that needs to be removed and voted upon separately? Hearing none. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stopcheck, second by Mr. Griffin. George, can you take the roll?
Ms. Lotcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Housel?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, back over to you, Dr. Reiba, for your timely information.
Thank you, Ms. Housel. Just a few updates as we get into the second week of school. So one of the great parts about fall is we do elementary nights at all of our home football games. So it's not just about the home football game and the kids getting out on the field and creating the tunnel. That's a great experience for our families and our kids. But we've, we've done a lot of stuff in the school. So Maraski is upcoming this Friday night, which means that we've got athletes that are going to, are going down and having lunch with the kids there. We bring the band. We bring some athletes there to get the kids to have a little pep rally before. So every elementary school gets an elementary night at the football game. Even though we have six home games this year, we'll get all five of them in starting this week. So it's just a great way to kick off the, the fall season and get some excitement with the kids and a great crowd out to the football game on Friday night. Moving on to the middle school. The middle school did a lot of work over last year in terms of taking a look at how are we going to start the school year and build meaningful relationships with our, our students and build a sense of team before we get into all of the academics and the structure of the school year. So they planned out, Andy was a part of that work over at the middle school, planned out a great first three, first three days of school to create those experiences. Jenny and I were over there the first couple of days, and a lot of positive feedback from all of the staff in terms of how things went. Obviously, with anything, there's tweaks to be made, but overall, a positive experience. And here's one example of the Dragons team, is one of their team-building experiences, activities that they do to build a sense of unity within their group as they kick off the school year. At the high school today, Dan and Jenny and I were up at the high school. So this is our fifth year, which it's hard to believe, but so five years ago, we, we started our first career exploration program cohort with the idea to help support students that maybe were not yet on the college path or the career path, to give them some experiences during high school in a two-year cohort to get, get a feel for what they want to do after high school. You know, we went around the room today and talked. You've got students in here that want to go into the military, students that want to go right into the workforce, and students that are on the college track. And so it's, Mr. Jankar has led that and helped develop the program. We've got great business partners. You know, Kevin, you'll learn in a couple of weeks, or next week when we meet, and Haley's been a part of it, that this is a big part of our Business Advisory Committee's effort is to help support these students. So it was, it's a great group of kids, and it may be difficult to see the picture, but over the years, we've struggled with getting more female students involved. And this is probably the strongest class of balance between male and female students that we've had, which is, which is exciting to see. Just awesome kids. Awesome kids as you get a chance to, to talk to them. So we're, we're excited about, about this cohort and the fifth year of, of the program that's there. And then finally, as we heard from our, from Katie and the kids earlier today, the Homecoming Parade is coming up in a couple of weeks, Thursday, September 18th, 6:30 PM. We look forward to seeing everybody there to kick off Homecoming Weekend. And that concludes my timely information. Oh, oh, I did forget. I heard.
I was going to say, I saw that big.
Thank you. Tailgate's right in front of me. I'm looking at it. I'm looking at it. Yeah, so... Yes, so this, tomorrow, tomorrow night, we have our community tailgate. It's always a great event, starting at 5:00 o'clock. So there are going to be vendors all over the place, so games for the kids, food. You can hear the band, see the cheerleaders, and get ready before kickoff at 7:00 o'clock. So please come out. It's right next to the stadium. So between the high school and the stadium, everything's set up and get there early, have a great time, and then come inside to, to watch the game. Anything else, Jenny and Ms.? Okay, I got it. All right, now I'm done.
That brings us to Board of Education, other. Do we have any others?
I do have a fun other, if you all don't mind. Dan, thanks for alerting me. If you saw me looking at my phone, I was getting confirmation on something. But, you know, there's a big football game in Columbus this weekend. And while the game will be important, it's halftime that I think all of us in Strongsville should pay attention to. So I got confirmation from, from the Ohio State Band Director that Sean Baumann, who's a graduate of Ohio State, or a graduate of Strongsville, will be dotting the I. And so there's not really much of a bigger honor at Ohio State with the band than to dot the I. So it's given me goosebumps and fired up for, for Sean and for Strongsville, quite frankly. It's going to be very cool.
He's a great kid. I've known him since he was in kindergarten and I'm really proud of him.
It's really cool.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Thanks for sharing that. Any others? Okay, hearing none. Brings us to our meeting notifications. A regular Board of Education meeting work session will be held Thursday, September 11th, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the meeting room of the Administration Building, 18199 Cook Avenue, Strongsville, Ohio, followed by a regular Board of Education meeting to be held Thursday, September 25th, 2025, at 7:00 PM in this room here in the Admin Building. Next, Executive Session. We do have need to enter into Executive Session.
To consider the employment of a public employee and to consider matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or regulations or state statutes.
Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavcek, second by Mrs. Bissell. George, can you take the role?
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Houslem?
Yes.
We will enter into Executive Session at approximately 8:40. We do not see need to come back out into regular public session. So I want to wish everybody a good night and good luck to our Mustangs tomorrow night.